Ladies and gentlemen, it is now 6:31 and a quorum of members is present, so the meeting of the Board of Education of the School District of New Berlin is called to order. Please call a roll.
Ms. Crosby.
Here.
Mr. Helmer.
Here.
Mr. Kurth.
Here.
Ms. Schulz.
Here.
Mr. Seidel.
Here.
Ms. Unger.
Here.
Ms. Wundercheck.
Here.
I would entertain a motion to recess to close session.
Madam President, I move to recess in the closed session pursuant to Section 19.85 (1C) ENF of the Wisconsin statutes to consider A) the approval of closed session minutes of August 23; B) the employment performance and compensation matters pertaining to staff; and C) the Everside Health Review.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kurth and a second by Mr. Helmer. Please call a roll.
Mr. Kurth.
Yes.
Mr. Helmer.
Yes.
Ms. Crosby.
Us.
Ms. Schulz.
Yes.
Mr. Seidel.
Yes.
Ms. Unger.
Yes.
Ms. Wundercheck.
Yes.
We are moving into closed session and will return to open session around 7 o'clock.
It is now seven fourteen and we are returning from closed session into open session. In recognition of the serious and important nature of our efforts here, we will join in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. For all those who are able, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now for those who wish to prepare for the meeting, we will have a moment of silence. This is a public meeting of the Board of Education. Prior to this meeting, notice was given to the public last Friday by providing the agenda to the City Library. The agenda was also posted on the district website. A copy of the agenda was forwarded to the Journal Sentinel, the Waukesha Freeman, and the Waukesha Now, all of which have filed requests for all public notices. We begin with privilege of the floor. Meetings that the Board are conducted for the purpose of the business of the schools and therefore are not public meetings but meetings held in public. This portion of the meeting is an opportunity for you to come and voice your concerns to the Board. So please do not be offended when we quietly listen. We may even take notes. We do not immediately respond to your questions and comments. This is a time for you to talk and us to listen. Thank you for coming to voice your comments and concerns. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone, address the chair, and state your name whether or not you are a resident in the school district. Each presentation is restricted to a maximum of three minutes. Privilege of the floor will be limited to one half hour. Presentations are not to be designed for purposes of engaging others in a debate in this forum. Discussion of certified classified or professional personnel or of individual Board of Education members shall not be considered an appropriate topic for this forum and the speaker will be ruled out of order. First is Charlotte Crouppa.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Crouppa and I do reside in New Berlin. And tonight, I would like to take a few minutes to say thank you for voting to not put masks on our students in the school district of New Berlin at the last school board meeting. Your strength to stand up for the freedom of the parents of New Berlin and their freedom to choose what is best for their children was very appreciated. Freedom is defined by Merriam-Webster as equality or state of being free, such as the absence of necessity, coercion, or constraint in choice or action. Human freedom is a social concept that recognizes the dignity of individuals. Because freedom is inherently valuable and plays a role in the human progress, it is worth protecting and standing strong against those who will try to dismantle it. In a world currently where freedom is being trampled on, withheld, and stripped, it is welcoming to know there are members of this school board that understand freedom in our community. Please be resilient and continue to stand with our New Berlin residents' freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Meyer.
Hello, my name is Laura and I am a resident of New Berlin. I am concerned that with the slight uptick in COVID cases, that the pro-force maskers will pressure the Board to reverse their eight twenty-three decision. As we know, masks are not effective and this will never go away. We will have to learn to live with this and the masks are not the solution. We will see increases in cases and illnesses in general as fall and winter approach. However, I trust that the majority of our fellow parents will keep sick kids home to keep our schools open as they have done in the past. However, I do not trust our pro-muzzlers to be able to make the same responsible judgment to keep their sick kids home, as sending them sick and spreading any illness will only help fuel their agenda to muzzle all of our children. This Board has been able to support parental freedom and keep our kids safe and in school. I trust logic will continue to be followed. Thank you for supporting parental choice.
Thank you. And then we have Jeanette Noack.
Good evening, my name is Jeanette Noack and I am a New Berlin resident. First, I'd like to say that I am glad to see that the suicide policy is on the agenda tonight for the first read. I think that the Policy 5350 has an important criteria in it. I also noticed that the district website on the main page has a section for social emotional learning resources. The additional links for resources is very helpful for the school community to help navigate where to seek help. So this is definitely student focused and student oriented, so thank you so much for that. The next one is pretty big. And so the next thing-
It is now seven fourteen and we are returning from closed session into open session. In recognition of the serious and important nature of our efforts here, we will join in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. For all those who are able, please rise. And now for those who wish to prepare for the meeting, we will have a moment of silence. This is a public meeting of the Board of Education. Prior to this meeting, notice was given to the public last Friday by providing the agenda to the City Library. The agenda was also posted on the district website. A copy of the agenda was forwarded to the General Sentinel, the Waukesha Freeman, and the Waukesha Now, all of which have filed requests for all public notices. We'll begin with privilege of the floor. Meetings at the Board are conducted for the purpose of the business of the schools, and therefore are not public meetings, but meetings held in public. This portion of the meeting is an opportunity for you to come and voice your concerns to the Board. So please do not be offended when we quietly listen. We may even take notes. We do not immediately respond to your questions and comments. This is a time for you to talk and us to listen. Thank you for coming to voice your comments and concerns. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone, address the chair, and state your name whether or not you are a resident in the school district. Each presentation is to be restricted to a maximum of three minutes. Privilege of the floor will be limited to one half hour. Presentations are not to be designed for purposes of engaging others in a debate in this forum. Discussion of certified, classified, or professional personnel, or of individual Board of Education members shall not be considered an appropriate topic for this forum, and the speaker will be ruled out of order. First is Charlotte Crouppa.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Crouppa and I do reside in New Berlin. And tonight, I would like to take a few minutes to say thank you for voting to not put masks on our students in the school district of New Berlin at the last school board meeting. Your strength to stand up for the freedom of the parents of New Berlin and their freedom to choose what is best for their children was very appreciated. Freedom is defined by Merriam-Webster as equality or state of being free, such as the absence of necessity, coercion, or constraint in choice or action. Human freedom is a social concept that recognizes the dignity of individuals. Because freedom is inherently valuable and plays a role in the human progress, it is worth protecting and standing strong against those who will try to dismantle it. In a world currently where freedom is being trampled on, withheld, and stripped, it is welcoming to know there are members of this school board that understand freedom in our community. Please be resilient and continue to stand with our New Berlin residents' freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Meyer.
Hello, my name is Laura and I am a resident of New Berlin. I'm concerned that with the slight uptick in COVID cases, that the pro-force maskers will pressure the Board to reverse their eight twenty-three decision. As we know, masks are not effective, and this will never go away. We will have to learn to live with this, and the masks are not the solution. We will see increases in cases and illnesses in general as fall and winter approach. However, I trust that the majority of our fellow parents will keep sick kids home to keep our schools open as they have done in the past. However, I do not trust our pro-muzzlers to be able to make the same responsible judgment to keep their sick kids home, as sending them sick and spreading any illness will only help fuel their agenda to muzzle all of our children. This Board has been able to support parental freedom and keep our kids safe and in school. I trust logic will continue to be followed. Thank you for supporting parental choice.
Thank you. And then we have Jeanette Noack.
Good evening. My name is Jeanette Noack and I'm a New Berlin resident. First, I'd like to say that I am glad to see that the suicide policy is on the agenda tonight for the first read. I think that the Policy fifty-three fifty has an important criteria in it. I also noticed that the district website on the main page has a section for social, emotional learning resources. The additional links for resources is very helpful for the school community to help navigate where to seek help. So this is definitely student-focused and student-oriented. So thank you so much for that. The next one is pretty big. And so the next thing I want to address is Policy ninety-one sixty-one, which is Board of Education Code of Ethics for the School District of New Berlin. After months of observing the Board of Education public meetings held at Eisenhower, there have been some signals that something seems to be a bit off. It is clear that Part J of the policy, which is work with fellow Board members in the spirit of harmony and cooperation in spite of differences of opinion that may arise during vigorous debate of points at issue, has been often violated. Natural, but it is quite apparent. The next one is Part B. This is the one I want to address. Maintain confidentiality of privileged communication. It is extremely apparent that at the last Board of Education meeting, that there is examples of collusion going on. Group members of the New Berlin School District Parents for Freedom came and took a picture at this school in the cafeteria. What is most concerning was that one of the signs had the letters KKK bolded. Whatever the intended purpose, it was extremely offensive to our community, and I cannot believe that two weeks has gone by without any public apology. Another issue swept under the rug? Probably. However, my claim would be that because the admin of the New Berlin School District Parents for Freedom group who came, those members came, is also married to one of the Board members of this district, why would a Board member go against their spouse? The Board member who sits on this Board, should they ever apologize for action made by their spouse's group that they manage and that they know what is going on? So I am making a formal complaint that there are red flags of Part B of the policy, and I am making the allegation of conclusion between a Board member and the admin of the New Berlin School District Parents Freedom group. I am seeking that the policy be revised to include that Board members do not have connections that would benefit their seat on the Board, or affiliation with groups that would sway decisions made to the Board that do not have true intentions of representing all stakeholders in this community. You'll receive my official complaint in your email, and an investigation into this matter be taken seriously, as the trust in this community is what is at stake, and it is being observed by all. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Getzke?
Good evening, Brian Getzke. I am a resident of New Berlin. I just wanted to readdress something that I had brought up a few meetings ago in regards to the discrimination and bullying policy for the School District of New Berlin. I would like to reintroduce, or at least have you guys consider, the discrimination against vaccinated and non-vaccinated individuals. At that time, it wasn't a large precedence, but after our president's remarks over the last week, seemed like they are very fitting. If we could, this will protect not only the students from bullying, discrimination, from other students that may or may not have this opinion, but also teachers and other school personnel, because you guys are over a hundred. So I'm assuming that you're going to have to have a vaccination conversation with your teachers and/or your school administrators. So I would like to re-represent that. If we could introduce that into the terminology for the anti-discrimination and bullying portion of your policy, I would greatly appreciate it, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next, this president's message. And I would like to welcome everybody back to classes, since this is the first meeting after the start of classes. And welcome back, our Board student representatives, including, we have Emily is back with us. So welcome back. I would also like to take a moment to address the meeting decorum. As mentioned before, privilege of the floor, a school board meeting is not a public meeting, but a meeting held in public. I know this can be a little confusing, because they sound very much the same. This means that the meeting must be open and accessible to the public. But other than the time set aside for public comments, members of the public observing the meeting are not active participants in the meeting. It has been really good to see an increase in attendance at our meetings, and I really appreciate those who have taken an active interest in the administration of our school district and your desire to participate at meetings. But sometimes it becomes challenging to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting when the public wants to participate, as we have seen at so many of our previous meetings. So I ask you, members of the public, for understanding and to please respect the rules of public meetings that I, as a presiding officer, must enforce. That being said, there was a time when all of us here on the Board was where you were, and I hope that you all remember what that was like. I know for myself, feeling the frustration of not being able to ask questions or comment. I even remember on occasion when someone sitting in the public area tried to interject into the meeting and then being ruled out of order in a way that came across as completely dismissive of that person. Sitting on the other side, then, it didn't look very good. Dismissing the concerns of a taxpayer member of the community definitely did not look good. So I ask of my fellow Board members, be patient and understanding if we do have interruptions. And please know, while I have to rule interruptions out of order, I am not dismissing you or your concerns. I must enforce the rules, but I will exercise patience. Thank you. We can move on to the administrative reports.
We'll start with Emily.
Hi. So many students are happy to be back in person with two-way hallways and being able to see each other's faces. Many high schoolers have enjoyed being back in the football games and cheering on the team from the stands. Seniors have taken the spotlight this year with chalked parking spots, decorated cars, and fun student ID pictures. Parents of seniors decorated lockers to wish their students success in their final year of high school. The New Berlin West Choir took part in a memorial service for nine eleven last Friday. The New Berlin West Student Government has been working hard to plan for Homecoming Week this year. Plans so far include a movie night, trivia night, food trucks, powder puff, flex games, a pep rally, themed days, and a dance. The Spanish Honor Society is planning for Hispanic Heritage Month, which runs from September fifteenth to October fifteenth. New Berlin West is currently running a clothing drive for refugees from Afghanistan who are going to Fort McCoy. Cross Country went to Timber Lee last week and had two athletes' medal, Kaitlyn Myers and Andy Verbos. West played a hard game against CMH last Friday, and will face off Ike this Friday. Our soccer team is off to a great start this season, starting with a five-to-one record and being state-ranked. We held our parent meet-and-greet on the evening of September eighth, with many parents and students attending to meet their teachers and learn expectations for the school year. And we also have two students who were named national merit semifinalists this year, scoring in the top one percent of all students in the nation on the PSAT exam. Thank you.
All right. I typically never do this, but I can guarantee that New Berlin will win this Friday night at the football game. So a few of my updates. I did want to provide an update related to COVID, which is what I will be doing probably again throughout the rest of this school year, as I did last year. Our numbers as of Friday, at the end of day Friday, were that we have twenty-four students that are identified as being positive, COVID-positive, and no staff being COVID-positive. I haven't looked at the numbers today, but that could have changed by today.
Can I ask a quick question on that? So I've gotten a lot of questions. It says, like, sixteen, eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-four, and clearly those aren't the cases for that day. That's not a new running total. How does that actually work? Do those cases stay on there for five days? Or is it from the second you get identified, they go on there that day, and then it falls off as soon as they're back in school?
Yes.
Okay. So someone could be on there for three days, or they could be on there for two weeks.
Correct. Correct.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
I did have an inquiry from a parent via email about that as well, and we clarified that. Actually, we'll make a note to maybe add that to the dashboard, Diana, to clarify that point. And then just another point of clarification, we are not keeping track of quarantined students or staff. We did last year, because we were requiring quarantines. This year, quarantines are recommended per what was approved by the Board, which is what we did at the end of last school year. And we certainly don't want to mislead our general public, parents and so on, because that wouldn't be an accurate reflection of those, you know, I mean, I guess we could, but it, you know, it wouldn't be the same numbers that we had a year ago. I do have an update related to something that was just mentioned, and certainly, we were a bit startled by President Biden's assertion to have employers, have their employees vaccinated. Fortunately, we did receive a lot of feedback from varying legal firms throughout Wisconsin, especially ours, Von Breezen, that we work with, along with our insurance consultant, USI, and others. And as of right now, the way that it's worded is that we would not, as a public school district, fall under what was brought up by the president recently. So that's one thing. Beyond that, I believe there will likely be challenges of constitutionality of that, of what's being proposed. I do believe it will likely be challenged in court, once that takes into effect, and I really don't know when it will. But should it, I'm sure it will be taken up, and there will be a precedent set based on those challenges to whatever requirements come down. So again, as of right now, should that move forward, we would not be impacted as a school district. And again, as what had been proposed to the Board, as well as what was approved by the Board, is that we are not requiring vaccinations of students or staff. So again, until we're told otherwise by this Board, and/or should it be a mandate from the president or the governor, we would certainly look into that, just like we are now, and receive word from legal counsel to determine how best we would move forward in the School District of New Berlin. As far as other updates, I did want to mention that we're off, Emily mentioned just some of the great things that are happening at West, and there's a lot of great things happening in the school district, in and out of the classroom. All of you should have already received in the mail our 2020, 2021 annual report, which you can see here. We're extremely proud of this. It's also posted on our website, kind of highlights some of the great things that happened last year, despite the challenges that we were all faced with. And again, a lot of great things in there, so I'd encourage whoever's watching or the audience members here to take a look at that. We all certainly have a lot to be proud of. And again, we're off to another great school year this year. Moving over to our facilities planning, and I did want to talk briefly about the financial planning that goes with the facilities plan. The Board did approve a capital improvement plan for facilities last spring. And part of that was also approving a financial plan to support that plan. I'm happy to mention that the things that were on there to be completed this school year, there are two items that have been fully completed. One is that we made the upgrades to the HVAC control systems to the latest software. I think Andy called it like J-PAC or something like that. But all those updates have been done at all of the schools, as had been approved by the Board. We also did complete the roofing project here at Eisenhower. I think we had a roof replacement over by the music wing. That was literally done, I think, this summer, a week or two, right before the start of the school year. So that has been completed. And the item that is in process right now is the replacement of the lighting with LED lights throughout Poplar Creek School. So that LED lighting project will be completed this year. It's in process, and certainly we look forward to having that complete. So those were the things that were approved per the plan by the Board for this current year. What I want to mention, and I want to reiterate to the Board in my update to you a couple weeks ago, and I know that Patrick will be working with the Finance Committee to kind of talk about what next steps might be, but we are happy to mention that we will be experiencing a budget surplus that we'll be presenting to the Board and to the community at our Budget Hearing and Annual Meeting in two weeks. So again, I want to remind folks that we do have our Budget Hearing and Annual Meeting scheduled. It will be held here, which is different than previous years. I think we've typically been over at West.
And did you say the word surplus?
Pardon me?
Did you say the word surplus?
I did.
Oh, okay.
I did say the word surplus.
All right.
But I want to caution you that while we are going to be experiencing a $3 million surplus, let me just kind of clarify a couple things. Three million, that's great. That's a good side of the budget to be on. But there are significant contributing factors to this. The one thing that I want to mention is, right off the bat, a million dollars of that is already spoken for, approximately a million dollars is already spoken for. And the reason why I say that is because things that we assumed would be billed last school year, or last fiscal year, were not, were not, or would not be billed until the current school year. So those dollars are actually carrying over to the current school year. Much of it is because of supply chain and backorder issues. So we had, like, textbook supply chain issues, so we're not, we got them delayed, so we got them after July one. We also got additional revenues, which I'm extremely proud of. We had some outstanding Alio checks. So if you recall, we moved our finance system from Alio to Skyward. And so there were some things that we were clearing the books on as it related to Alio. So as part of the transition, that was almost $200,000. We had a Medicare cost settlement, $185,000. We had about $115,000 in additional year tuition waiver money. And then we received an additional $50,000 in E-rate rebates. E-rate are dollars that are basically reimbursed for technology-type expenses. And I'm proud to say that, I'm proud of our entire team, particularly proud of Kelly and Patrick and the work that they do with their administrators. Patrick being our CFO, he's no longer new. So that's, you can't use the, you know, he's the new guy thing anymore. So that's probably a good thing that he's coming in and helping with this. But we came in under budget, $250,000 less. I actually checked that, because that was TNL, because the books were delayed. But, you know, Nicole will be up here shortly, and essentially, we moved healthcare administration expenses to our healthcare liability accounts. So that was $200,000 less there. $450,000 in central services, which is where we set aside allocations for COVID-related expenses and one-time expenses. We came in at $440,000 under budget. $626,000 less in special education transfers due to enhanced budget management, and lower-than-anticipated student service costs. Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Amanda. And Kelly. And then about $400,000 on Patrick managing not only the Budget and Finance Department budget, but also in managing the Buildings and Grounds budget as well. So again, we're extremely proud of this. And again, so we're really talking about a $2 million surplus, roughly. And what we are currently working on, while we will, you know, Patrick will work with the Finance Committee about the details, we are going to be bringing back to the full Board what now that means that we have this $2 million. You know, so one thing that the Board could do is just leave it alone and leave it in our fund balance. Another thing that the Board could do is you could expedite our facilities planning and our facilities capital improvement. Or you could do a mishmash of both. You can, you know, because right now, we have basically a three-to-five-year plan, financial, and essentially a capital improvement, facilities cost, plan in place. And some of that could now be more solidified because of this. It could be moved up, or we could just wait to see, you know, how things go. Especially, we do have a biennial budget coming up next school year, so who knows what's going to happen there. And it's going to be at an election year, so, you know, obviously. But the point is, we're going to be bringing forth a recommendation on what we could do as a result of that. Certainly, we're not going to be saying, hey, you know, I mean, you could give the superintendent $2 million give the, like, the superintendent a $2 million raise, but maybe not. But but the point being is that, you know, we certainly want to make sure that we are reviewing our plan now that we have these surplus dollars in place. And we want to make sure that the board actually approves what we plan to do as a result of that. Part of the rationale behind us bringing a recommendation, too, is what whatever the board decides will impact our forecasting. So like, for example, if you're going to go ahead and actually move some of those projects down to, you know, maybe we projected to do the projects four years from now, if now instead you're going to do it in year three or year two, that could impact our forecasting. And then Patrick would have to set some of those dollars aside for said planning. Or if we're experiencing, you know, if our forecast says in years three and four, we're going to be experiencing deficits, well, this would certainly take care of that, too. So the reason why we're going to want to at least have the board approve some sort of plan is because we want to make sure that we're doing a better job of bringing you updated numbers for our forecast.
Can I make one recommendation?
Of course.
That that plan includes an aggressive debt paydown plan as part of this?
Second.
This is not an action item. When would we be taking action on this? When would it be put on?
Well, so the first, first things first, we got to get the budget hearing annual meeting done next meeting. And then the second meeting in October, the board will approve the current budget. For the most part, that's pretty well set already. I mean, there are going to be some nuances that Patrick will present at, now that we actually have more solid numbers, and we're going to have the third Friday counts ready, we'll have more solid numbers then. I think, you know, right now, we're actually already working through those details, so my hope would be that in November or December, we could have that completed, just because we want to get that stuff out of the way, allow us a little bit of time, you know, because again, now I mentioned the things that were already done this year. One thing that we are working on is also, we are working with PMA, who's our financial advisor for for a lot of different things, and then also, we work with Forecast Five on our forecasting models. So Patrick needs a little bit of time to be able to kind of walk through those things with them. But I feel comfortable being able to bring something to the board. Obviously, it's going to be a two, a two-board meeting thing, so we'll bring something to you. You might not have questions, or you will, and then we'll bring something to you at another meeting, which then the board could tell us what direction, or if you want to wait for a third meeting, we can do that. And I think we'll have time to do that. But our goal would be to do that hopefully before the the new calendar year.
So I believe our debt, our bonds are callable in March. Is that correct, Patrick? I think the next grouping?
We have some that are callable.
I don't think it's a big chunk, but that's the one I would like to be targeted. So I think it's going to be hard to get my support on spending that $2 million unless a large piece of it goes towards that.
Of course.
Just a heads up.
Yep, and again, Patrick is already working on that. So, you know, he's not just working on the, he's working on the refinancing possibilities too, as well as possible buydowns. So we'll have that for you when we bring that presentation at that time. And again, meanwhile, Patrick and Ron, that may be something that you want to throw on a finance committee meeting, mainly just to solidify the numbers of what's going to be in the surplus, not so much determining the plan, because I think that's a full board decision and determination. So that is my update.
Okay, thank you. And then we have a short personnel committee update, since a lot of what we're doing tonight actually deals with the personnel committee. Kate, do you want to share a little what we've done?
Sure, sorry, just opening it. So we did have a personnel committee meeting on August 30. A few of the items discussed were things that Nicole is discussing with us here tonight, as well as one of the policies that we'll be reviewing tonight as well. So it is attached to the packet. We did talk about a couple other policies, and then in there also, I have the agendas laid out for our January and February meetings as well.
And of course, we're we're voting on the superintendent evaluation.
Correct.
Format.
Yeah.
Tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so then the consent agenda, which includes the notice and approval minutes of August 23. Are any items that need to be pulled out for separate consideration? Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Hallmer and a second by Mr. Kurth to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. Onto the regular agenda. First up is the employment services update.
So Nicole Jones, our director of employment services, is here. As the board is aware, Nicole typically presents two to three times to the board to provide an update. Her last update was, I believe, in either May or June. And at that time, we typically present quite a bit of information, but we typically wait for this presentation until now, just because the hiring season is over, the 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 time for for personnel exchange is over. And so Nicole will have that next part of that update that she presented in June now.
So this one's a little bit shorter than what we did in the spring. It encompasses, as as Joe mentioned, our turnover data, our retention data, some exit interviews, and then some generalities about our compensation process, which we also do towards late summer. So in terms of voluntary resignations, we had 11 voluntary resignations this year, five of which went to another district. So if you click on, if you're into the presentation, you can click on the link and see year-over-year. Last year, it was 12 voluntary resignations, so we're down one. And last year, again, we had five go to another district, so very similar. You can see which districts folks went to. We had three people relocate, one is staying home to raise a family, and we had two career changers. And then we had a probably a slight uptick in retirements this past year with nine. And then this data is going to show you our year-over-year voluntary turnover rate. As you can see, we have had, we have the lowest turnover rate that we've seen since 2015-16. So a nice success story there in terms of our rate, and it's probably, it's the first time we've had our turnover rate be below the local average. So again, a nice positive for our district in regards to this data. Let me have our exit interview feedback. So what's going well? So I kind of, I pulled together all the exit interview data, looked for themes. This is what we do with our stay interview data as well. It's a, it's a mix of some of our retirees who wanted to sit down and do the exit interview, as well as a handful of our actual voluntary resignation folk. So we pulled out some themes, and here's, you can see what has been going well for them as a team in terms of our teamwork, our, and you see a lot of overlap between this data and the data that was presented this past spring, where our teaching staff very much appreciate their ability to work with the team, which is very reflective in the fact that we're a professional learning community, we that we, that's one of the things that we take pride in, being collaborative, making sure that our teachers have time to be collaborative and share new ideas, reflect on data. So again, that's a strong point for us, maintaining high expectations for our students and our staff. Again, it was, this was a theme we saw in the spring as well. School leaders being professional, being very supportive. So when our principals are there, they're in the classrooms, they're doing observations, they're providing feedback, they're encouraging teachers to take risks in the classroom and try new things. And then availability of resources. So our teachers have said that when they needed something, they've asked for it, they've gotten it for the classroom to support their student learning. So again, a positive for us is that we're able to support them with the resources they need to provide quality instruction. And then many of them did say that they felt valued, and you saw that we didn't have, we had very few teachers leave us to go to another district. If they left us to go to another district, most times it was not a money-related thing. It was the district was closer to home. An example of somebody who wanted to work for a bilingual school. So it's the the feeling of value, they're feeling valued. We're not seeing that as being as high an issue. Areas of challenge, again, we see this often, and other districts see this as well, it's that work-life balance, especially over the last year, where we're managing both face-to-face learning and virtual learning at times. It was definitely a tough year for a lot of our teaching staff, so to trying to balance that workload and make sure everything is working. Again, trying to reduce the amount of initiatives that we take on if we can, or spread them out, and we have been actively working on that year-over-year to make sure that people have the capacity to take on the change that we're wanting to implement. More visibility from directors. Again, obviously, with this past year, being in the buildings wasn't necessarily something that we we wanted people to do. We had all of our, many of our meetings were virtual this this past year. But certainly getting into this year, getting our directors back into the buildings to just do some check-ins with our staff, just generally making sure that the buildings are are where they need to be. More training for new programs. We did take on some curriculum in the last, I mean, we've been taking on curriculum, and so again, last year was, it was an odd year. A lot of the training had to be done virtually, which for many of our staff, they said that it was not ideal. They prefer the face-to-face, and so again, being able to provide that training face-to-face and in person again, as we've done in the past, should help address this. And student behaviors, there was challenging student behaviors that we're seeing in some of the schools, and more teachers are looking for different ways that they can address it, different ways to engage students in the learning process, to reduce student behaviors. So we need to continue to build that toolbox up for our students and our teachers. And then as far as our compensation update, we we receive completed teacher portfolios. This is part of our compensation model. So teachers who, it's about one-third of our staff, our teaching staff that qualify a little bit less than that year-over-year to submit a professional portfolio. They compile their portfolio over the course of three years, and it's very data-intensive, so asking them to provide evidence of how they lead, how they have grown professionally, how they collaborate, as well as how they're implementing our district initiatives, technological literacy, other intentional instructional practices, universal design for learning, how they're implementing that in the classroom. We not only ask them for evidence of how they're doing all those things, but then we say, yes, you're doing it, is it working? So provide us with data to show that it's actually having an impact on student growth. So this is information related to that portfolio process. Portfolio submissions are due June 30. They're scored during the month of July, and then we let teachers know what awards here that they've they've risen to. This year, we had 33 total submissions. That makes up about 42% of those who were eligible to submit a portfolio, and you can see the school breakdown of where those portfolios came from. And then we had 82% of that group actually earn the highest level of compensation, and we had 15% earn the middle-level compensation. So year-over-year, we're seeing very improvements to the portfolio. They're they're really quite fun, really wonderful to read and to go through and to see the growth that our teachers are achieving in the classroom, with their colleagues, across their school, across the district. So it's really, it's a wonderful process to to get to dig into and get to know some teachers on a more individual basis as well, and see their work that way. And then just some items for our department, employment services department, things that we're working on going into this next year. We're going to be looking again at the, we're going to do another analysis of our teacher compensation. We did one a couple years ago. So the DPI data from 2021 is up to date. We will pull those teacher salary comps, run them against our own comps, and see how we compare, and if we need to make any, recommend any adjustments in any particular areas. We're also, we also have our new consulting group, USI, that we're working with, very much enjoying our work with them. They are bulldogs, and we're happy to have them on our team. So we'll be working with USI to review our benefits, see how they're in alignment with our ability to retain our staff, but also make sure that we're being fiscally responsible and doing all the things we need to do in that area. And then we are looking to do some monthly check-ins with staff in the buildings. We'll take a topic each month and kind of get their feedback on that topic face-to-face in person. Not only helps us be in the buildings more, but it's getting us feedback on an ongoing basis throughout the year. So any questions?
I just have one question on the timing on the compensation review. Should I put that on a future personnel committee agenda? And when do you think you might have that?
I could probably get that to us in, like, late winter.
Okay.
Maybe February.
February, okay. Sounds good, thanks.
Nicole, as a part of the compensation review, do you look at other districts? I think you do, right? As a part of that review, could you take a look at other districts and whether a majority of other districts gave their staff COVID bonuses? Because I know we didn't.
Right.
So I'd be interested in those numbers.
We can absolutely, we can do a survey now.
Go into that with our HR, local HR group.
Great, thank you.
Prislin, I couldn't hear you. Can you repeat that?
Sure. I was asking Nicole if, when they reviewed the compensation numbers among other districts and how we compare, if Nicole could add to the list which districts have given COVID bonuses to their staff, because we did not do so. So I was wondering how we compared in that regard.
Any other questions?
I do know that the board loves these presentations from Nicole, so it'd probably be, I would recommend that the board set that as part of their goals, to have Nicole come back.
I think it is. We'll be talking about it next.
Oh, it's in there? Oh, that's great.
Yeah, okay. All right. This is very good, thank you.
Thank you.
So now we have our board goals, and we, this is going back to a work session we had in August, and at that work session, we decided that, oh, okay, thank you, we decided we would come back to this after we did all of our, you know, discussion. I took all the notes, and what I did is I took those notes and I just basically compiled them into this presentation. And make sure I'm doing this right. So in black is the actual goals, and they really haven't changed much over the last two years compared to when we first started doing this. And then in blue is the, basically the action items, the actual things we want to do to reach those goals this year. And so for the first one, increase performance on Saturday test district-wide, expand opportunities for students, and understand the student experience. And based on what was discussed, action items, look at our district year-over-year growth from MAP scores and ACT scores, seek more feedback on metrics, and we would actually need to seek more feedback on metrics from administration for exactly how how we could work that out. And then bring back field trips was one of the things that was mentioned that I had a note on, and then continue where we left off with visiting schools and inviting more student representatives to board meetings. For the next one, goal number two regarding staff, again, this didn't change, it's understand staff experience and retain at least 90% of staff each year, and I can see it, this year, we made that goal. And continue to have Nicole Jones provide exit state interview results. So we do indeed want her to come back. You saw this before, don't pretend. Have the benefits advisor conduct a benefit survey for employees, preferably in time for the January personnel committee meeting. I think I just put that on there because that was a note I took. So if we're going to have a meeting in February, we could do that in February. The idea was to have it done around the time that the renewal was going to be available, since the plans renew every July 1 now, so. And then for our third goal regarding fiscal, active fiscal responsibility, balance the budget yearly without depleting fund balance, other than the money that's been allocated for long-range planning over the next three years, be good stewards of physical assets. And the action items I had from our notes was allocate money to Fund 41, and we'd work with Patrick to set that amount and put more money into the classrooms.
The great news is, part of our recommendation will be some of that.
Great. And number four, community, improve communication to all stakeholders. This has been our goal now for, this will be our third year. Action items, link meeting minutes on board website to make them easier to find. Now, this, I think, is something that we would have to work out with Diana or Dave Cody, how we would be able to do that. Also,
Also, update, oh, these goals, once, if everybody agrees that these are the goals we want to continue with, we make sure that's on our, our board website. And then communicate post-board meeting summaries, possibly on social media after each meeting, because the meeting, the meeting minutes are not actually approved until the following meeting. So there's this big delay. So if people want to see what the actual outcome of a vote was, we want to get them that information earlier if we possibly can. And then share more information about co-curricular activities and academics and not necessarily the athletics. I think that's, if I remember correctly. So this is just based off all the notes that I took. If we're ready to vote to approve this, if there's somebody that wants to make a motion and we can discuss, we can amend.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. So I have a motion by Mr. Seidel and a second by Mr. Kirth to approve the goals as presented. Discussion.
So I did want to interject a couple of things. Did want to clarify that we're moving away from MAP to FastBridge as our, as our assessment. So we would suggest that instead of it saying MAP scores, it'd be FastBridge scores. We will be referring, referring back to previous MAP scores and when we do our analysis, but-
Is there a correlation between the two that we would be able to-
There will be, there will be, yes. Or maybe just put FastBridge slash MAP until we kind of get through. We actually, Diana will make note that we will be, we were just kind of waiting for the board to decide, but we plan on being back in the schools as I think is what you have here. As opposed to just having board meetings here, we would do the rotation like we had before. And we, I think we, we started those in December or November. So like, we would probably do like West in December and then hit the elementary schools in the spring is what we would probably be doing.
I think we got to do Poplar Creek still, if that could be the first one. I think that's one we haven't done yet.
Oh, sure. Oh, that's right.
We got shut off with-
Cut that short.
Yep.
We can do that.
I don't think we went to Reagan either.
Weren't we in the library?
I don't remember Reagan.
No, we didn't go to Reagan.
No.
Because it was supposed to be in April.
Okay.
Okay. So whichever one we missed, we'll start with.
Poplar Creek and Reagan.
We didn't go to, yeah, we didn't go to PC either.
As far as the Fund Forty-One, I wasn't being facetious. We are, that is part of what we'll be bringing to the board in our recommendation. And then actually, this is on our, our team leadership agenda for tomorrow. So some of the things listed in number four, Janet, we'll get up and going as soon as we can.
Okay. And as, as far as what we're approving are really the portions in black, which are the actual goals.
Got it, yep.
But I still wanted to put out there the action items that, because those really are what change every year is our action items.
Right.
Not so much our goals. But I did want to make sure, and I know we've never actually officially voted on this before, but I figured we might as well make it official. There's no reason not to.
I thought about adding something for fiscal with the debt pay down. And I don't know if we want to make that a goal for the board.
Is it, how, how would you work it?
That's what I'm trying to figure out. Pay down, pay down the debt in nine years or something like that?
That can be, that can be more of an action item and it falls under our goal of, you know, act with fiscal, act with fiscal responsibility. So I mean, I don't see why we couldn't make that an action item. Any other discussion? Okay, so then all those in favor of these being our goals? Aye, raise your hand. I'm sorry, raise your right hand. All those, all those not in favor, raise your right hand. And the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Then we have policies for first read. We have thirty-two seventeen, fifty-seven seventy-two weapons, which is replacing the current fifty-one twenty-nine. There's thirty-three sixty-two employee anti-harassment. This is coming from the Personnel Committee. It replaces forty-one oh-eight harassment. There's fifty-three fifty, student suicide, which would be a new policy. Eighty-three thirty, student records, which will replace thirteen twenty-five and fifty-one twenty-five in regards to student records. And then eighty-four fifty-two, student abuse neglect, which would replace the current fifty-one forty-two point five. So these are just all first reads. We will be voting at, is it at our next meeting? Are we having a regular meeting for the twenty-seventh, which is also the-
Yeah, actually that's something we were going to check with you, Janet.
Okay.
We can either approve it at the, at a regular meeting during the budget hearing, annual meeting, or you could delay until the following meeting, so the first meeting in, in October.
Okay.
It really just depends on how long you want your night to be next Monday, or two Mondays from now.
Okay. And I, I don't think it would be out of line for individual board members to send me their opinion because it's not really an action thing. It's just a-
Correct.
Scheduling. So I wouldn't mind hearing from you what you, if you want to get it on the next agenda or if we should wait until October.
Get it on the agenda.
Or you want to tell me right now?
Yeah, we have no problem with that.
So do it right away on the twenty-seventh, everybody feels comfortable with that? Okay, if I haven't, we'll, we'll do that then. Okay. So just everybody in the public is aware that if you have comments on any of these, please send them in before our next meeting. Or if anybody else here on the board has any questions for administration in regards to those, just make sure that you get your questions in before the next meeting.
Sorry, this, I had sent you an email and I apologize for the lateness. But can we ask our questions and discuss these policies tonight? I feel like when we're doing these policy reviews, we seem to be having discussion on the second night and then we're discussing and approving right away or voting right away versus discussing as part of the first read, revising and then quickly voting in the second meeting. Like I feel like we should-
If you have questions right now, sure. And I think we have done that in the past for-
Yeah, I mean, the only-
Questions now.
I, I think the intent, and I, because I did get your email, Kate. The intent is for you to get your questions to us ahead of time if you can. So, so then that way, we can then make edits to the document or at least mention that a board member proposes such change or has a question on said whatever. So then that way, we could then bring that to you at this meeting, the first meeting, and then just bring it out here so that at least we have some direction going into that second meeting. So that would be our suggestion is to, if you had, you know, obviously do what you got to do today. But, you know, we would recommend to, to get any comments, questions, concerns ahead of time so that that way we can bring to this meeting, the first meeting, the first reading, those items. And then we can actually, like, in some of it, we would need to consult with legal counsel or Neola. So then that way, we could at least respond to what was the question or the concern or the feedback that was brought. So, so we would encourage the board to do that. But anyway, go ahead, Kate, if you do have questions.
I did not have very many questions this time. These are a little bit more straightforward. So I have a question on the student suicide policy fifty-three fifty. I know that this is the, kind of the Neola template. I'm curious whether we have procedures around these recommended steps. I know I looked at the Muskego policy and they kind of outline within the policy what their procedures are. So I'm just, I know a lot of times we have kind of the high-level policy with procedures that support that. So just curious if we have additional information on what those procedures would be.
Yeah, so there, um, yeah, so we do have a link to that page in, in, in the, I believe it's in Board Doc? On the website.
Okay.
And, and yes, so if I may, Janet, if I can just speak to this policy in particular?
Yeah.
Okay, so yes. I guess what I wanted to do was, as this, as this has been proposed, you know, these are things that we already do as a school district and have done. One of the things that we did do since, and I think it was noted by an audience member and now being highlighted by Dan on the big screen, is that we've actually now made this more prominent on our website as well. So I guess Kelly, could you just speak to, you know, A, we've done this and some of the detail related to what we have? Because not everybody may be able to read what's, what's up here.
So everything that's currently proposed in the suicide policy, those step one through step five are all things that we do. We also have a very detailed crisis plan that outlines everything from stabilization to the follow-up. On our website is all of the Waukesha County resources that we have available to us. But all of our counselors, administrators, psychologists, they all have access to our inter-district crisis plan that steps out every piece that's in our policy. We wanted our policy to be very nice and clean, just like a lot of our policies that have some administrative procedures behind them. We understand the crisis plan that goes along with this. And, you know, that's what we take any student through if, if it is deemed necessary that we do so.
I would be remiss not to add that I'm proud of Kelly and her team's work. Not because, just, not just with what they've done, but Kelly has also brought in additional resources in the team. As you know, we did receive mental health grants the last go-around. We were just approved, thanks to Kelly and her team's work again, for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was the maximum amount, seventy-five thousand for the next two years for mental health support services. So again, we are, you know, again, this is what we have been doing. It's what we will continue to do. We will enhance it as we can. But again, certainly just wanted to draw the attention as per requested.
And I know in the past, we've had presentations done on social, emotional and mental health. There's a plan to do that again as well later this year.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Again, if you do have comments, questions, concerns between now and the next meeting, please get those to me or Diana as soon as you can so that we, we can include those things in the board packet when we send it to the board that Wednesday before the meeting.
I have a few more questions. I don't know if Kate, if you were done.
I, I did have one minor one on the policy eighty-four sixty-two. Well, I guess two. So one of them, there's a reference to policy eighty-four sixty-two dot zero one. Is that something that we have? And then the original policy had kind of definitions of what was meant by abuse versus neglect. I don't know if that's something we would want to keep. If that's defined elsewhere for our staff that are doing this type of reporting? If it's covered in the training that's mentioned in this document? Kelly's nodding her head. That's kind of what I thought. I just wanted to make sure before we took that out, that it was covered somewhere else. Thank you.
And I can address that other policy. It was approved back in August. Were there more questions?
I just have a few questions. For the weapons policy, I know that we had, we're basically taking this, our current policy fifty-one twenty-nine and we're parlaying that into two separate policies, it looks like. Policy thirty-two seventeen and policy fifty-seven seventy-two. And one of the things that, right off the top, that I was wondering if we could do was to highlight that one of these is for staff and one of them is for students. Because I found it super confusing to look at the two policies and say, why do we have two policies called weapons? When, that seems weird.
Yeah, they typically were just, you know, if you look at the numbering, one is for staff and one is for students, so that's why, but-
Yeah, I was just wondering if we could just have weapons, you know,
Sure.
race staff or weapons race students or whatever.
Easy enough, yeah.
So that's just a small thing.
Yep.
And then regarding the weapons policy regarding students, in paragraph one, two, three, four, five, the paragraph that begins, "Any student who has reason to believe that a person has or will violate this policy shall report to the school principal or supervisor of the activity immediately." And I guess this is a question for a legal counsel. Because I don't know how you mandate that a student who's not your employee has a duty to report such a thing, even though I want that student to do that. But how do we legally require a student to do that? Especially if that student is afraid for their own safety if they do report it? And I don't want to, I mean, I sort of, I feel like it falls into the, the land of sort of bullying and, you know, stuff like that. If we mandate this of our students, then are we exacerbating a problem that will make, possibly be made worse for them? Do you know what I'm saying? So I guess that's a question for a legal counsel. And how do we, like, number one, can we do that? I don't know if we can. And number two, it's a question for us as far as whether we should, if we can. Because I don't want to put students in a worse position than they might be otherwise. I certainly want to find out about this stuff and I certainly want them to report if they feel comfortable doing so. But I worry about the fallout to kids who might be the reporters. Because you can't really have a mandatory reporter who's a child, right? I mean, so that's my question on that one. My question on the weapons regarding staff is there are several exceptions about weapons on school grounds. And we have, don't we have a trap shooting club? And don't they do things on our property?
No.
They don't?
No.
Okay. So what, they go to a club? So, but they're not, they don't like meet here with their weapons in their stuff or anything? Okay, just wanted to make sure about that. I didn't know how that works, so I appreciate the clarification. That was my only concern about that. And I think, yeah, that's all I had on that one. And then I did have a question on the policy eighty-three thirty, which is the student records policy. And Joe, I'm going to call on you because I feel like you'll remember this.
You're putting me on the spot now.
I know, I'm sorry. I, I feel like you will remember this. A few years ago, we sort of stopped doing school directories. Remember that whole shebang?
I remember that.
Okay, right. And, and there is some information in this policy relating to directory information, you know, sort of codifying what that is. And I guess, and I, I think this is sort of tangentially related to this policy. But do you remember which policy it was or how we did away with the whole directory business?
Yeah, I mean, so in general, we limited it to who those directories were available to. So, so it was an equal access thing. So if you gave it to one, so like, for example, if you gave it to the Home and School Association, which is what we were doing, then you have to give it to all. Or you give it to those that you're only required to give it to and nobody else. So in that instance, because we had, and, and also in that instance, it was taken from outside the district, it wasn't requested of us, but because somebody had digital access to it previously, those individuals had access to those records kind of from that third party per se. I don't exactly remember how it worked, but, but again, it was based on this equal access thing. And so we essentially just restricted that access to all unless they're required.
Okay, so who has access to directories in schools now?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I said, who has access to directories, to student directories in schools now?
It depends. You know, so right, as of right now, it would be internal staff. And then unless we're required, which, I don't know, military or, like, some of those things come to mind where statutorily we're required to provide them. I, I just, I don't know, I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay, that's okay. I was just wondering about that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, so then next is to discuss approve the superintendent evaluation. Kate, would you like to present that before we vote?
Sure. So the proposed superintendent evaluation, we've looked at a couple of times. There is one change, as we had discussed, I think, in one of our closed sessions about modifying the budget-related goal so that updated text per Patrick's recommendation is in the latest version. So again, we were really just trying to streamline this process a little bit, pare it down so it's a little easier for us, easier for Joe. We will be including kind of a self-evaluation for Joe going forward, which I think will help the board as well with our own evaluation, so. Do you want me to make the motion?
Okay, um, let's see, because it's being recommended by the- Okay, um, let's see, because it's being recommended by the Personnel Committee, like, we just have to make a motion?
I think I just make a motion, no second. Yeah, so I move that we approve this proposed superintendent evaluation form.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Unger, which has been recommended by the Personnel Committee. Any discussion? Everybody's ready to vote then? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. And then also, forgot to mention, Diana, you were going to try to put this in a Google form, so we can collect it that way-
Yes.
-going forward to make it easier.
So I'll make that change, and then probably provide you with the, what the Google form will look like.
Okay, okay.
And then, last item, action on discussed in closed session. Do we have a motion for our closed session?
Madam President, I move to approve the employment performance and compensation matters pertaining to staff as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kirth, and a second by Mr. Halmer. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. So then we have future meetings and dates. Board meetings are generally held the second and fourth Mondays, beginning at 7:00 PM in the Eisenhower Commons, unless noted otherwise. September 27th is our district budget hearing, an annual meeting. It will be at 7:00 PM here in the Eisenhower Commons. The next regular scheduled meeting is October 12th, but that is a Tuesday. And then the following one is October 25th. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to.
I have a motion by Mr. Kirth, and a second by Mr. Halmer. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? This meeting is adjourned, thank you.